This is the planning board meeting, April 11th, out of Upton. Let's go through the previous meetings minutes and welcome. Are there any comments or on the previous meetings minutes as distributed? Is there a motion to approve the minutes as distributed?
Well, what which minutes are we approving? Because weren't there two sets circulated?
Ones without lead or letterhead.
Should be the last one you got.
You got them today, Paul.
Yep, I did, and I looked at them.
No, there's two there. One had letterhead, one did not. We're acting on the one without letterhead.
Wait, I said with letter. Okay. With letterhead or without letterhead?
Without letterhead.
Okay.
Any issues with the minutes? Their motion to approve, do we want to give people a minute to, I think there was something.
I move to accept the minutes as prepared.
Second. All right. Any discussion on the motion? Get all those in favor of accepting the minutes as distributed, say goodbye to CNI, we'll stop with you, Paul.
Aye.
And Gary?
Aye.
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 That's your names.
So I will put final on them and get rid of all the draft copies.
Please do.
And send them, great, you're the one who's posting them on the website.
Free up a lot of gigabyte space on your computer, yes. Now, as far as the treasures report.
I can give the treasures report if you'd like.
Please do.
So I've met today with Mike and we went over the, we've had. One important thing to note is the planning board wages. We didn't pay wages for quite a while. So we're going to end up about fourteen thousand, with about fourteen thousand dollars extra in that account. So I suggested to Mike that he find out if there's any way that he could use it. But it is, it was approved as wages. The other account, the expense account, we still have three thousand nine hundred seventy-five dollars in it. So again, that account, you know, I'm, I was going to talk to Denise and see how she was spending that money down.
And that's only six weeks away from reviewing it anyway.
Right.
Is that account, is that the one used for projects and?
Yeah, yeah, for printers and cartridges and all that stuff.
But it's not the one people make when they make payments for, when they submit a plan.
Anybody looking for money?
They need money back.
Oh, that's wrong. No.
That was, it was.
You know, we had, there was a request that was since nine, because that was for a forty B. So no, no requests to return Astro funds yet.
Got a lot of forty Bs. Forty Bs happened because planning boards refuse to let multi-family since.
We're working on it. We're working on it.
Well, you have force.
That's all enough for you. Not much.
Yeah, and now we have that conversation today, so I was going to follow up with Denise, some of the stuff. And see if, like I said, I don't think it's really possible to move the salary. Salary to be spent on something else because it is dedicated to town meeting. And see if I can get a little more clarification on how to use the money if we can. For planning support, I don't have much. I just wanted to run a few things by the board tonight. I discussed with the EDC potential of expanding the Maragana Overlay District. This happened as a result of there was an interested person in town wanting to do cultivation on their land. So he approached me as to, you know, how do I make, I'm not within the overlay, how do I make this happen? So obviously, the answer is either you can't, or he needs to figure out how to amend the zoning bylaw in order to allow you to do that.
Right, no, it's commercial industrial only, correct?
Correct. So the EDC was the opinion.
I'm sorry, Mike, how close is the applicant, the potential applicant to the overlay?
Oh, not close at all. Yeah, without giving out their location and specifics, yeah, they're not very close to that overlay at all.
I assume, I mean, basically you said that they wanted to do it on farmland, so it's an agricultural.
So it's not technically agriculture, because it's cannabis, but.
It's a well, if you want to go to, what's the other one? Hemp, right?
Yes.
That's, that's.
Not a controlled substance.
That's not a controlled substance, and it's agricultural, we got a two hundred dollar application. So one form of it is, it's just that we don't allow regular cannabis, we only, CNI in a town, it's two thirds agricultural. So he has a good thing, but the town said no.
Yeah, so, and then also, I figured out that the land wants to do it on, it's only about five acres. So the, and he wanted to do it outside, and as your regulation by law is currently, everything has to be inside. So as a result, the EDC didn't really want to look at it anymore, but I just wanted to make you aware of that conversation in case anything should come up again, and if there's any willingness on part of this board to explore that.
Yeah, I think, I think it might be, you know, over the next couple of years, time to relook at some of these regs, because I think this town was super reactionary about.
Everything?
Everything. And, you know, it's a, it's a legitimate business enterprise, and it's a legitimate agricultural enterprise that we've been trying to really control.
I think we've maintained our identity somewhat by being a little bit overreactive at times, but we're not generating any revenue by our reactions at all.
And we're, I mean, we're actually not helping the agricultural base of the community by being overreacting.
I agree.
So that, yeah, that was that conversation.
You guys are great. There's eggs flying outside.
All right, go ahead.
He's going to argue for twenty-two foot roof.
Sawmills. Sawmills. There's, there's an operation happening off of Main Street, just north of the center, north of West Upton. And there's, I guess, the question really is a sawmill, we don't have it spelled out in our zoning bylaw as for a listed use, and the closest thing I could find within our listed use is light manufacturing for a sawmill. So we got, we got some people conducting that use in town, they're, you know, they ran into a little bit of trouble just being a little too close to a river area.
Is that the sisters?
Yeah. And so they need a little bit of guidance on how to proceed with that use officially, you know, if they require a special permit, because they're in the zone that requires special permit for light manufacturing, or whatever, whatever other type of approval they may need through this.
What's over there?
This general business, I think it is. Let me double check.
They're the one, right at the mechanic when you turn onto, you know, handle left onto Main Street. It's, there's a couple wooden things out front, the sisters.
They've developed that property over the years, and it's hard access, it's wet.
Can I ask it on mechanic?
No, it's on Main Street. Left onto me.
Yeah, they had like a big wooden, like a table or a bench or something like that out there.
And now they have other stuff. They have a box, they have, they put a bunch of stuff on the street. I see it every day and I'm intrigued.
See, they're CNI or general business, because they're like right on the line there.
It's a lot of houses.
But either, either way, it requires special permit for light manufacturing, if that's what is, it is determined that that falls under. You don't have to make a determination tonight, but I just wanted to mention it to you, because I wanted to bring them to the planning board. That was suggested by Pat, your, 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 um.
Yes, Gary, can I ask you a question on this?
Yeah.
What in, what in our zoning table do you think matches up closest with this?
Well, I would go with what Mike said. I mean, that's probably the closest, especially since Mike's taken a look at it, so. Yeah, not going to argue with Mike's analysis, yeah. Don't they, don't they need a site plan review too? Change of use?
Well, if it's a change of use, if it fits into a, you know, like we did the dog grooming, we said it fit into grooming and it when a dog groomed a person, we said it was the same use.
Was it, was it light manufacturing before? What was there before?
I don't understand that property. There's some sort of storage of equipment and materials that is happening on that property that is separate from their business.
I guess I don't know enough to say it's a change of use. I don't know what uses are allowed. I can't remember what, if this is, if this comes close enough so that it doesn't require a change of use, just a site plan, not a special permit?
Well, yeah, I mean, the biggest thing getting the special permit, because site plan obviously governs by right uses, so I'm sure they can cross that hurdle if we get to that point, but I.
We should have a discussion on that use, that property and what's allowed in the zone.
Yeah.
And Tom, just to, just to be clear, I think special permit in terms of the, the landowner would be the best case scenario for the landowner. If I'm reading Mike correctly, it's either prohibited, or at best is a special permit.
And a site plan.
Right, depending on the use.
Probably be both, if it's ten parking spaces, or if it's two thousand square foot building, or anything like that, would be for recycling as well.
It's a, I mean, it's a small operation, which is, you know, I'm sure a bit frustrating for, for them, you know, it's, it's just those two ladies running a small operation, it's not as though it's a warehouse building, but it's, at the same time, it's how do you categorize a sawmill use, even if it is, you know, it's, it's the primary use of that property currently?
So when you, you say it's a sawmill, but then I heard that there was a bench out front, so is it, are they using the sawmill to make small furniture?
I think so.
So it's not like they're generating thousands of board feet of, to sell at Lowe's or something?
No, I don't think so. It's.
You know, I mean, this is, there is a town, there's, there's businesses I'm aware, like woodworking shops.
Okay.
Like in residential areas and, you know, and there's, I don't think, they had to get approval from, you know, I think the planning board, I mean, the folks that I'm curating.
They had to or did not?
They did. They had to go through because I was concerned about the chemicals they need.
That was the best issue.
Yes, I will, I will reach out to them for an agreeable date for the planning board coming to discuss their operations.
And I'll ask the person I know who has the woodworking shop, what hurdles in town.
Yeah, we actually ran in, you know, if they are doing woodworking and that sort of thing, remember the Port of Health also came in.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, yeah.
Because of chemicals.
Yeah.
And then lastly.
Their Facebook picture says that they're, you know, it's two, two sisters that own and operate a sawmill, and they delivered, assembled six garden boxes for a customer. It's not, it's not a lot, it looks like, but.
It's a small.
Boxes, yeah.
I mean, Ken ships, you know, makes and he takes furniture and stuff in from Shaker Furniture and customizes it and ships it out to Maine and Texas and all these other places, so, I mean, you know, he's, he's got to, you know, it's mostly him and like a part-time person. But it's an active business and it supports him.
The, the important things to tell them are, we're not the only board that would have an issue, conservation would definitely have an issue in that area.
Well, where they're already working with Mary Overhold.
It's, it's coming out on Main Street, so access onto Main Street is going to be, curve cuts are going to be, if any curve cuts, it's going to go through the state. So there's a lot of things that may have to happen besides just planning.
They're going to be giving the one forty.
And so, and then lastly, we'll be bringing in five more farms, or sometimes soon, they have to submit a site plan, because they will be adding twenty-two parking spaces, I think it was, but a good amount of parking to support their business that they have out there. And so I'll look forward to that. We'll have a discussion with them before they submit site plan, because they just want to come in and talk to the board prior to access that application. And that's it.
Okay, very much. Okay, we have no.
No A and Rs.
Form eight, oh. And notice and advertising for associate membership expires May twenty-third. We forgot to put you on soon enough, so we're going to have to post that right away.
And how do you, how have you handled that typically? I think it's, you, Denise told me, I think you used to pull the hat in the town prior, but obviously that doesn't exist anymore. So how would you like to proceed with that?
You can put it in the wish to papers, fine with me. Anybody have a problem with the telegram as a paper? A post-advertising associate member?
I think they, the town found that was significantly cheaper than the Milford Daily News.
There is going to be a replacement, or there has been a replacement, so something showed up and said they were trying to replace the prior.
Yeah.
Yeah, just once a month, though, and it doesn't have anything, and then they don't do a, take out of the cost of.
Yeah.
And then we'll be taking applications to that, if you don't operate it.
And then your term, and then your term ends.
What, what we think, right?
All right, next thing we have, East Street has been continued to twenty-fifth, correct?
Yep.
So Governor's Landing is next.
I don't know these. Yeah, it's twenty-fifth, I think, it's okay.
Sorry, that's okay.
Are there any questions before?
Where does it stand? Can you tell us where, can you tell me where it stands?
Well, we're asking them to give us the, the, the last thing, the problem was that stop the retaining, they have a problem with the A and W. He hasn't committed something that our EPW has.
The retaining law related to the, the.
Instead of, they can't, they can't beat their side slopes of four to one, so they're closing that. That instead, that half, that base is solid, won't fall in us in five, ten years, so he hasn't got the contract to ensure that that's not going to happen, so he hasn't done that yet. But we've asked him is when he gets all the ducks in a row, let every, we're going to repost the public hearing, going to have, re-notify all the butters, and so that you don't have to come in here every two weeks and hear nothing.
We have an item on it.
So from the twenty-fifth, he's going to come in and talk to what he's done, and at that point, we're going to have to notify the butters, and we'll hold a public hearing, hopefully the last one, we'll be quote.
But just to expand on that one more time, is that they have, you know, and this is fairly common apparently, but right before meetings, they request continuances, which is why we don't want the community, or don't want the people to have to come to the meeting where they come, because we don't want just our ECT. So there's going to be one more meeting after they come in with all the stuff to pay me.
You're always welcome to come.
If you are, if you are butters, right?
Yeah.
So you will, so you will be there.
And is it still, it's been so long now, I can't even remember his name, is it, is it still the same proponent?
Moses, I think so, yeah.
It started about.
Yeah, I have no idea. I think it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a. Have a continued, want to suspend the regularly scheduled meeting and open up, so the new public hearing, Governor's Landing. For a special permit, we have Governor's Landing on the line. Hello, Jeff, how are you?
Hi, good evening. Jeff Roloff's counsel for the applicant, and Sean Malone's with me this evening.
Take it away.
All right, great. So since the last meeting that we had on March fourteenth, we have received an additional round of comments from the peer review consultant, DGT. That came in this afternoon, so I've only had a chance to quickly read through it. There were a few questions that they had that we're going to need to respond to, but I didn't see anything in there that I think is going to be problematic or really change the configuration of the project. So we'll just keep that open as a, we'll keep that out there as a, a letter that we'll need to respond to. We'll submit that as we usually do. Since the last meeting, I submitted a letter dated April sixth, and what I tried to do there was to pull together in one place the various sort of deviations or called waiver requests or determinations that we discussed, discussed at our last meeting. There were five of those, and I'm happy to walk through those, as I was reading through them since submitting them and discuss them quickly with Michael. It occurs to me that we probably, you know, it's up to the board as to how you want to handle these. Three of these items, I don't know if, I'm assuming you've had a chance to read through the letter, and I can put it on the screen if you wanted to, but three of the items relate to subdivision design standards that the current project configuration doesn't strictly comply with. For at least one of those, you know, there's a question as to whether it even applies to this context. We actually questioned whether any of these design standards explicitly apply to this senior housing development. It's not a subdivision, it doesn't involve, it won't involve a subdivision process. These are A and R lots, but it is a special permit process, so we wanted to at least bring to your attention, just like DGT did, where the proposed roadways and infrastructure doesn't strictly comply with the design standards that you normally apply in a subdivision context. So those are three of the five requests.
That's the block layout, yep. That's the block layout, right?
And I, I should point out, so in reviewing DGT's letter today, there were actually two deviations from the standards that I missed and didn't get into my letter. So in my letter, the three subdivision design standards that I covered were the, there's a six lot limit for cul-de-sacs, and we're proposing more units than six, although all of the units we're proposing are on one lot, because it's a senior housing development in a condominium context. So our first point was, we don't even think this applies, we're not proposing more than one lot on the cul-de-sac. If you do think it applies, we're asking for a waiver, we, you know, we've had this number of units along this cul-de-sac for quite a long time now, nobody has raised any concerns with it, the cul-de-sac's shorter than what the subdivision provisions allow. So we just don't think it presents any issue there. The other provision related to the sidewalks, the subdivision rules require the, the normal roadways, five-foot sidewalks on both sides of the roadway. We're proposing four-foot sidewalks on one side. The subdivision rules do allow a sidewalk only on one side for cul-de-sacs, but they still require five-foot sidewalks. At our last meeting, a couple of you, I think, suggested that you might prefer a five-foot sidewalk. It wasn't clear if there was a consensus on that, so we haven't made any changes to the plans. The plan that's in front of you right now proposes four-foot sidewalks on one side of the roadways throughout the development. The other requirement is the roadway widths. So we're proposing twenty-six roadway widths at the entrances near Milford Street, and then twenty-four feet through the remainder of the development, which we think is totally adequate for the amount of traffic we're talking about here. So, you know, to the extent you think it applies, we're asking for a waiver from that. In DGT's letter of today, if you were to go to pages ten and eleven, you'll see two design standards that I omitted from my letter inadvertently. One of them relates to the tangent of at least a hundred and fifty feet in length. We did talk about this at the last meeting. It's been a feature of what we've been proposing for quite a while. So I would just bring that to your attention, and then on page eleven of DGT's letter.
You repeat that one, I haven't seen the DGT.
Did, did we?
Yeah, fine. I'm going to, yeah, Sean, want to, can you elaborate on that one requirement? So this is, this is the, it's section four eight two of the design standards and the subdivision rules and regs. And what DGT says is, there does not appear to be a tangent of at least a hundred and fifty feet in length separating reverse curves along the northern roadway entrance to the site to the proposed cul-de-sac within the senior housing community. Sean, do you want to elaborate on that?
Yeah, be happy to, and it might be helpful if I can share my screen to show you on the plan where we're talking.
Go ahead.
Okay.
That's just on the right-hand side, right as you come in, and it's, that's how you've got it.
Yeah.
Curve there, okay.
So, so that, and that's exactly right, Paul. We, we have this kind of gentle curve, they're large radius, I think two hundred fifty, three hundred foot radii, so it's not a quick zigzag, but per the subdivision rules and regs, at the, the point of tangency of this curve here, you would have to extend straight for a hundred and fifty feet, and then curve again, and then a hundred and fifty feet, and then curve again. So part of our.
What's the, what's the purpose of that one? Why is, why, why, is that, is that a bad law?
Is, is that a, is it, is it a bad standard? Is that what you're asking me?
Yeah, why do we have this, why do we have that standard?
I, I think it, it, it can be looked at in a case-by-case basis. The intention is that you don't have a serpentine-type roadway, that's just SSSS. You know, that, that's the idea where you kind of have, you know, a little bit more flow to the road. In, in some towns, I've also come across, they prefer to have a feature more like what we have here, where you have the large diameter back-to-back curves, you know, they, a curve of linear roadway, they call it, because this can help keep speeds down. When you have straightaways, people tend to step on it a little bit more. So I think that it can be looked at in a, in a case-by-case basis. Am I suggesting in any ways you need to change your, your rules and regs? No. But I do think in this particular instance, a waiver from that requirement to the point that it's necessary is warranted here.
So, so what I'm hearing is that the planning board would require it, but only in an area that has a, let's say, a higher speed and sharper curves, or more, more turns, more curves?
I guess, I, I'm not suggesting a kind of universal overall planning board policy, if, if that's what you're asking me.
Well, you're asking, you're asking to waive it, and I'm saying, why, why we waive it to you, and why would we make somebody else do it, but we're going to waive it to you? If it's a good law, everybody does it, but if it's a bad law, nobody does it.
Well, I, everybody's land is, is different, every subdivision is different. And one of the other things we, we talked about, or pointed out the last time, in this particular lot, you know, extending this another hundred and fifty feet, you're into more ledge, you're going to be bending it back. It really is going to kind of expand this footprint and more, going to have a lot more earthwork, ledge removal, ledge cut. So those are.
That's not on the town.
That's why I think it'd be valid in this case.
But that's on you, but that's, that's the reason why you don't want to do it. Why should the town waive that? I mean, what are the reasons that the town should waive that? What's, why is it in the best interest of Upton for you to not have to follow the standards?
Yeah. And ultimately, I, 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 you know, recognize it is up to the, the board with their decision, where they feel that this design meets the intent of, of what the rules and regs are looking for, is it's providing a safe road. We believe we've provided some justification, the notion of keeping speeds down and kind of making a slower, longer winding road, we think it, it fits with this property. So we're, we're offering it as a, as a request for the board's consideration.
Yeah, Tom, the other thing I would point out, and, and as Jeff mentioned a couple minutes ago, is this is not a subdivision. So I think it's, it's great that the applicant is bringing these issues up as a, I see it as more of a courtesy. But this is, it's not a subdivision, so there's some give and take. So I'd hate to see strict adherence to subdivision control come at the expense of other things like the open space configuration and, and other things like that. I think I'm a little bit in the, in the middle on that, Tom. I, you know, you ask if it's a bad standard. I think it's a good standard to, you know, to look at and to deviate from only when, you know, it makes sense to. Just sort of like, our standard is sidewalks on two sides, but I don't think, since I've been on the planning board, I don't think we've required it on two sides, but we might. And, you know, also the length of cul-de-sacs, we've, we've bent on that. And I guess on this one, you know, obviously, the benefit to the, to the applicant might be, maybe they get that one unit and that's, that's the first one that, you know, that, that you see after that, after that curve. and that's, that's the first one that, you know, that, that you see after that, after that curve. But to me, it kind, I don't know, to me, it kind of looks like a decent build of a roadway. And I think we did hold, and I was on the board at the time, I think I, I, I probably voted with the majority. But we, we held, um, the, the North Street development to some of the design standards that maybe we shouldn't have. You know, that meandering sidewalk that they wanted might have made that, that subdivision look a little bit better than it did when it was done. There were other issues there. So I, I, I think it's, it's very appropriate to challenge any deviations from the, uh, you know, from, from the norm. But I'm, you know, I think maybe my, my standard isn't necessarily a demonstrable benefit to the town, but that it's, it makes sense from a, you know, in, 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 when we take into consideration all the circumstances. And this one, I'm just looking at it from a design standpoint, it kind of looks nice. And I, I would, I would require the applicant to make sure that police and fire were okay with sight lines and turning radii and things like that. But I don't, I don't see that as an issue here. That, that's me. So I'm kind of in the middle.
Paul, I'll agree with you on that and say that, you know, when you know that there's going to be a lot of cotton fill, if you can avoid some of it, I, I know that it's, it's an economic savings for the developer, but it's also an environmental, in my mind, environmentally preferable to avoid some of that cotton fill.
That as well. Uh, the reasons that I heard, uh, keeping the speed down, uh, making it more aesthetic, uh, are all good reasons to ask for the waiver. And those are what I'm talking about. It's in the best interest of the town to do a safer road design than simply stick to, uh, the standards. So I agree. All right, thank you.
And then moving on, so just going back to DGT's letter, uh, if you were to look at page 11, when you get a chance, they mentioned again, the, the block length requirement in the design, subdivision design standards. And Sean, do you want to just hit on that quickly? Again, I inadvertently omitted that for my April 6th letter, but you will see it in DGT's letter on page 11. And we did talk about it before, Sean.
Yeah, and here they just talk about some standards, a 600 to 1200 foot block length or size. And what I understand that to mean is, you know, after 600 to 1200 feet of road, you would have an intersecting road and make a block. We had looked at something more similar to this, um, with one of our previous iterations and that, you know, it obviously by definition cuts through the, the middle of the site here really, which is something that we're trying to avoid and, and really want to avoid because of, um, some of the, uh, the artifacts or, or archaeological interests in the vernal pool and things of that nature up here. So that's how we kind of landed on this large circular, uh, project rather than something really kind of blow, broken up into blocks.
And for me, I, you know, that comes, that's, that's a similar one to what I just talked about, you know. I think if you have that long of a run without a break, whether it's a long block run or a long cul-de-sac, we need to take a look at it and make sure it makes sense before we give up a, you know, a waiver on that. And, you know, with a cul-de-sac, oftentimes we'll ask for police and fire to make sure that they're okay getting equipment in. Now here you do have two entrances, so you're, you're looking at being able to get to that back two different ways. Even though whichever way you choose is going to be a, a long run, but it does, for the same reasons, that, that one doesn't bother me as much.
And then we need to put sister and if it's a long way, we can't get that, we'd be able to put a sister in the middle of the cul-de-sac at the end. But the, the block, the blocks are more designed, they're more intended for a, a single-family layout with streets as opposed to this.
Yeah.
Um, and so then just turning back to my April 6th letter, there also were two issues that I discussed that we had discussed a few months back. One of them relates to the senior housing provision for a hundred foot perimeter buffer. And the other one is actually a townhouse open space standard, which is, um, involves the special permit process in front of the ZBA. But let's start with the 100 foot perimeter buffer requirement. So Sean, if you want to just highlight that portion of the roadway where this comes into play, the, the senior housing provisions require a 100 foot perimeter buffer around the senior housing community. And what DGT pointed out in its comment letters is that our northern driveway, it cuts through that perimeter buffer sort of on an angle rather than perpendicularly as the southern access roadway does. So Sean, just looking at the southern access roadway quickly, obviously you need to be able to get in and out of these senior housing communities, right? So the zoning bylaws requirement for a hundred foot perimeter buffer can't prohibit access through that buffer to the community, to and from the community. And DGT didn't even mention any issue with respect to the southern access roadway, as you can see there. On the northern side, I think the reason they raise it as an issue is that the roadway comes through the buffer at an angle. And so it just raises the question that that roadway's coming in, it's closer to the neighboring property than 100 feet. DGT thought the buffer and the design was adequate, but it just pointed out that the planning board should give it some thought and confirm that you're okay with this design. The senior housing provision itself, um, allows you the flexibility to require less than 100 foot screen buffer, even if, for example, we were proposing other things in there such as buildings or parking or something like that. So in my letter, we point out that we don't actually think that this 100 foot perimeter buffer requirement precludes the driveway cutting through it in the way that we've proposed. If you think that it does as a, you know, as a, as a default position, you have the discretion to allow this proposed configuration. And we're asking you to, to approve it in the way that we've proposed it. It's presented this way for quite a long time. We addressed this issue squarely in August and have only changed it to a minor extent since then. There are no buildings in this, in this 100 foot buffer area. You can see that dotted line there, which is the, which sort of highlights the perimeter buffer. And then Sean had, uh, in December, provided you with two zoomed-in sketches of this area. One of them, one of them superimposed on an aerial map and explained the topography of the roadway. And I can walk through it if you want, but I think we've made the case that it's an appropriate design. It was designed the way that it is to minimize the extent of cutting into the bank that would be required if we were to shift that roadway further from the adjacent property. So we think it's a, a design that makes sense and we're just asking for you to approve it. You don't have to do that tonight by any vote or anything like that. But again, it's one of these sort of design issues that DGT has told you to think about. And if, if any of you, or if, if you as a board aren't comfortable with this, this design, we want to know it now because this is the time to change it.
Just to refresh my memory a little bit, I do remember the conversation on this. And, um, you know, my concern was I was a little bit gun-shy about doing anything that touches on a buffer zone with recent experience we had. And you looked at that site that you do not own, that job that sort of requires the buffer. And it is not a developable lot, correct? So it will not be impinging or imposing on anyone else's. And I think you answered this, said square on. It, it's, it's not going to have an impact on a neighbor.
It's like, they're going to have to cross that.
They'd have to cross the wetlands to get there. So you're never going to want, there's never going to be, you know, no one's going to be impacted by it.
I've got a couple of things. Oh, I do want to let everybody, I do want to let everybody know, uh, we are being recorded and transcribed as part of our privacy policy. Just want to remind everyone of that. And secondly, on, on things like that, Jeff, we are familiar, within that 100 foot buffer, there may be things that, that you can't plant, whether they be rock, ledge or, or water, whatever. So, uh, not having the 100 feet isn't, isn't unusual in having the entire, uh, entire width. Because up on the, um, senior housing up in Northbridge, I think, the site that was closest to Northbridge, we allowed less of a setback on that one because Northbridge allowed less of a setback on their side. So to match, uh, the neighborhood, uh, we did match, we did lessen the 100 foot. So we have done it in the past.
Yeah, and we, and we did elaborate on the fact that, you know, this area, it would be a difficult, it's, it's a wooded, the adjacent lot with this sort of little rectangular strip that sticks into our parcel. It's a, it's a completely wooded, um, to develop that area, they would have to come in through the buffer zone. It seems like an area that's unlikely to be developed. You know, this plan's been in, in the subject of this hearing process for a long time. And I don't believe that those, uh, property owners have raised any objections. And, uh, given the, um, the elevation of the roadway and the retaining walls there, Sean discusses this in his August letter and I reiterated it in my April 6th letter. We, we don't think, you know, the roadway, even if you were standing in that area on the adjacent property, the visibility to the roadway would be obscured by the vegetation that would remain as well as the, um, the topography and the retaining walls there. So, um, yeah, in any event, we think it's a suitable design. And again, if you, uh, if you did have objections to it, we just would want to know, know that now, but.
Yes, I have no objections to it.
And finally, the last determination is sort of an odd one because, and this is, uh, request number five in my April 6th letter. It relates to the townhouse development. So in the townhouse development provisions, which is a special permit process before the zoning board, we'll be meeting with them next week. There's a provision that requires that there be 8,000 square feet of usable common open space per dwelling unit. And it then defines usable common open space to include, uh, quote, areas left substantially in a natural state or improved by landscaping and primarily designed and intended for the active and passive recreation of the occupants of the dwellings. It goes on to say that usable common open space shall not include street rights of way, open parking or service areas, driveways, easements for above-ground utilities, laundry drying areas, required front yards, landscaped area around the buildings, and this is the provision that pulls you into it, or any other land deemed unsuitable by the planning board for reasons of excessive slope or poor drainage. It's a little odd that it defers to the planning board, uh, in terms of making that determination. You don't have to make any determination at all. I think if you just leave it up to the, uh, the zoning board to apply these standards, then we'll just deal with the, uh, the zoning board on it. But we bring this to your attention because you're in a position where if you wanted to deem any of the areas that we're treating as open space in the townhouse development, if you wanted to determine that those are unsuitable for reasons of excessive slope or poor drainage, the zoning bylaw gives you the opportunity to do that. So, um, again, if you do nothing and you don't provide a, a determination of unsuitability, then we'll just deal with the zoning board on that.
I've got a question. Jeff, I got a, a question on that. Who, who, who's the right one to ask us that question? You or the zoning board? Whether or not you comply with that zoning board requirement? Do you ask us or does the zoning board ask us if you comply?
Great question. I mean, the reason it came up at all is that because DGT presented it in its, uh, peer review letter that went to the planning board. So we thought we would just address it squarely, but I'm happy to sit on it. I'll raise it with the ZBA and if they want you to make a recommendation or chime in on it, they could ask you. I think that would be appropriate.
I think Paul may have had a-
Yeah, no, I, just the way, when I first read that provision, I, I sort of assumed that they were not looking for the planning board to actually make a determination or not, but that they would be, that they would be, the ZBA would be using the criteria we would use. You know, that it was more of a, almost like a planning board design standard as, as opposed to a planning board, um, approval rate. And, you know, what would we, what would we deem inappropriate? I, I don't know if that's a different way to look at it, but I, I just, I didn't see the planning board getting too involved in a ZBA special permit.
But yet we're in there.
You're in it. Like I said, it's an awkward provision. I mean, I actually think the zoning bylaw, when it was written, meant to reference the ZBA there. And, you know, just for some reason inadvertently referenced the planning board. But either way, um, whether it's you or the ZBA, we think the open spaces that we've designated, you know, we've sort of counted in this calculation, are suitable open space areas, particularly where they define them as including areas left substantially in a natural state. The majority of what we're proposing for open space are the natural areas out there, the wetlands, the buffer zones, you know, areas that we're providing a trail through, et cetera. But again, I'm, if you do, if you decide to just sit on it and not do anything for right now, I think that's totally appropriate. If the ZBA wants you to chime in, they can ask for that. Um, and if you don't affirmatively-
Why, why would you ask us to solve a, a problem that we're not supposed to solve? You're not, that's not part of our process. It's part of the ZBA process. So, so giving it, I think the problem is that our engineer responded to it and that, that causes the confusion. So we, 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 uh, we're not part of that process. And if the, and if the ZBA wants to know our, our, uh, our section, they can talk to us. Although they, of course, Paul said they can just follow our, our dimensions, how we, how it is, how it's listed there.
Yeah, I'm totally fine with that. That's fine. And we'll be in front of the ZBA next week. So they also get copies of DGT's letters. The peer review's been doing, you know, they've been doing peer review for both of you.
That makes sense, uh, Gary, Paul?
Yep, I agree.
Okay.
All right. What else? That's it?
No, no. So two, two other issues. So, um, one issue is this cross-country sewer run. And I got to say, this is a really tricky issue, right? Because, so DGT has conducted a preliminary review of that cross-country route. They discuss it in the letter that they submitted today. So you'll see that. There's some information that they requested from DPW that they're still waiting for. And they had a few questions that, um, we might be able to help them with. So their review is ongoing, I would say, and, um, we'll work with them on that. I think the more challenging issue though, is that we know that, um, DPW, the town, doesn't approve of the cross-country route. They don't prefer it and everyone wants us to connect to sewer in Milford Street and we're totally happy to do that. The problem is that if we don't get an approval decision that would allow for, for the cross-country route as a backup, we're never going to be able to secure, um, the financing that we need to start construction on anything. And probably wouldn't start construction on anything anyways because the uncertainties of the utility connection would be too great. So with respect to Milford Street, the town is currently using the funds it received from the state. They were designed funds to go through the design effort associated with the Milford Street utility runs. And we've offered to contribute, um, towards the cost of that. They're working on the designs right now. They're going to be applying for the construction grants in June. And the decision for that is going to be in October. So that's, you know, we're talking about several months out before they know if they have the funding. And then there's, and then if they get the funding, then they would still need to sort of go through the process of, uh, you know, getting the contracts in place and everything else and starting to work. So the question is, what do we do between now and October when we don't know if this, if the town's even going to get these funds? And do we just sit on this permitting process and just do nothing until October? Or do we work towards a decision and conclude, to conclude this process with a condition that would, would require us to connect to the Milford Street utility runs if they're installed by, or if construction is started by some date certain, with the backup of, um, proceeding with the cross-country route, you know, subject to final design specs being approved by DPW or something like that. So that that backup is in place from the get-go, at least as coming out of this process. So how we deal with that is, is kind of tricky. And as I was thinking about it today, um, two things occurred to me. Number one, I think we need to have additional discussions with DPW, the selectman and the town manager on this issue. And how do we sort of, how can we address their issues sufficiently to build into a special permit decision, this backup approach in the event that the grant, that the grants don't come through for Milford Street? So, um, I'm offering, I'm just telling- So I'm offering, I'm just telling you, I think we need to have, we being the applicant team, need to have more discussions with other town officials on this issue while DGT is completing its review and will work with DGT on it. Separately, I think we're at a point in this process where we should think about how to conclude the process, understanding that that one issue is going to, we'll have to wrangle with that in terms of how we address it. But typically, at this stage, the board would, I think, I mean, and every board does this differently. So I don't want to suggest something different than what you normally do. But how do we get to the point where we start drafting a decision and drafting conditions so that we can understand how an approval might look? So that when you get to the point of deliberating, you know what you're deliberating on? Is this, you know, is, do you typically request staff to start working on a draft decision? Or how do we start bringing this process to a closure?
The easiest way, well, just first things first, is there's access through the, through the woods on your, you know, from my own viewpoint, I'm not the one that has to take care of that. That's the Department of Public Works. I'm going to, and I'm going to refer to the engineering and the experts in town before I would vote on that. If I'm told, but if I'm told by everybody that does this, that this is a perfectly safe and fine way to do it, I'm for it. So, so I'm going to be, I'm going to be referring to the experts on that particular request. As far as how do we end it? Typically, you're going to, you're going to say that you've gotten all of the answers settled from our engineer. You've gotten all of the questions from the town. You've got at least an answer to all of the questions from all of our folks. And we would vote, and anything left would be a subject to. And if you're, if you're asking for a vote on this side road, I mean, this utility's going down off the road, that would be a pretty good subject to. It would be, have to be subject to approval by DPW, subject to approval by those experts. So that's how you'd end it, the vote and a subject to.
Well, Tom, we, we could condition a vote, right? That could be a condition, so, and I'm not sure.
That's what I mean. We could vote any time and put the conditions on. Yes.
We can, you know, I'm happy to vote on that as a condition. But of course, that, you know, to, that's a lot of uncertainty, or perhaps it's not, depending upon how comfortable the applicant feels with the town. This has been a long process. I think the applicant probably knows the town pretty well by now. Yeah, so I think procedurally, that, that's certainly a way forward is to vote on it, conditioned upon if you don't get the 140 sewer, then you got to go, do, go through the woods, as you say.
And, and just, this is Paul, you know, I, my feeling is, or my memory is, we've kicked the can down the road on the overland route for quite a while. Not, and Jeff, you might tell me, no, you know, we've, we've moved that forward with, with the DPW and everybody else. But I'm not sure how much this board has been focused on the overland route for quite a while because we've been waiting to see, you know, what comes out. So if we're, if you're looking for us to approve that alternate route, don't we sort of have to have you put on your, your last best case as to, you know, approval of that as an alternate?
Yeah, I agree with that, and that's partly why we offered to cover the cost of DGT reviewing that route. So again, you'll see in their recent letter that they've started their review on that. They had some questions that they're waiting to hear from DPW on. They've got a couple of questions that we need to answer. So I do agree that's still an open issue, and we're going to need to get some more information to DGT and to you on that. At the very least, what we heard from the board is you want to know that that's a feasible route. Obviously, if DGT doesn't think it's a feasible route, you're not going to, you're not going to authorize it even as a backup. So you're right, Paul, we, we have more information to provide there and to present to you. But with the other issues, you know, mostly addressed, and while we're continuing to work through those, the minor issues that remain open other than that one, I'm just wondering if we should start drafting a decision. Do you normally have a decision in front of you before you vote? Or do you typically vote just on a motion with verbal conditions and then draft your decision? I would think for a project like this, we would work on a draft decision and maybe even discuss it as part of the hearing process so that when you're voting, you're voting on something. We all know what you're voting on. And if it's a vote of approval, we're comfortable with it.
Actually, Jeff, I would offer that the planning board doesn't need any assistance in drafting a letter.
A decision, okay. On bigger projects, we have, we have worked with the applicant. And I think you were recused on, for example, the planned village development. But we work closely with the applicant. I would say normally, we, it's kind of a verbal, I mean, we don't normally have things this big. So oftentimes, it's, we do a verbal motion and then figure out the decision. But on bigger projects, and I go back, way back to the PVD, where, like I said, Tom, I think you were recused, we did get the applicant involved on that decision just because it was, it was more complicated. So personally, I've seen it both ways.
Yeah, I, I was going to say the same thing, Tom. I, you know, we, we don't have to accept a word that they provide. But, you know, having them, you know, make sure that they at least put down what they hope we will, will, will put in our decision is helpful, I think. I, I don't have a problem with, with that. Again, with the caveat that we don't have to accept a word of it. But, but I think, you know, if we're approving something with conditions or even disapproving with, you know, with, with reasons, you know, getting it right the first time probably is, is helpful.
Yeah, and I would also add that this is the first time we've had a project of this size where we've had staff who work on drafting in advance.
Yep.
So we are in a slightly different position right now.
Well, I think, I mean, my sense is that, you know, the applicant has legal sources. And I think a lot of drafting a decision is, is, you know, part legal, part engineering. And, you know, I think having, you know, sort of a, an overall, you know, having the ask, you know, here's, and then we can craft it into a, you know, in, in, into a motion. I, I, I would be happy to, to accept their offer, and then we can move on with it.
What, we're accepting an offer from the applicant to write the decision for us? Are you kidding?
No, it isn't writing the decision.
Of course they are.
No, no, it isn't. We are writing...
And if there's anything in there that maybe is a mistake and it's, it's going to be in our favor?
What are they asking for? That's basically what it is.
To help, to help write the decision.
No, no, they're asking, no, what they're writing, it's not to let us know what they're asking for.
To draft?
No, it's to what they're asking for. And we can throw it out the window if we want.
Jeff, are you asking to help draft an approval or, or approval document?
I'm asking just how you want to approach, what I'm hoping will, in the near future, be closure of the process.
So if we're, if we're voting to deny it, you're going to help us write a denial letter?
No, I don't want to.
Come on, it makes no sense.
No, I'm asking you what you want to do. I'm not even suggesting anything. I'm really just raising the question of, how do we, how do we approach, what I hope is, in the near future, the closure of this process? Do you want to just, do you want?
Jeff, you give us satisfactory answers to every question we've asked you and every question that the town and the engineering. Once you've satisfied all of, all of the questions, you, you ask us for a vote, and we'll vote on it.
So, Tom, I think the point there is that in the past, when we voted on it, we have done, sort of tried to craft at the meeting during the vote, what the conditions are going to look like. We have staff now. We don't have to do that anymore, and we probably shouldn't. We should have the conditions written fully in advance, and there's no reason that they can't then be reviewed with the applicant in advance.
They have these finished with ZBA.
No, and, and... I would go back once again to the PVD. And I know, Paul, you were in on that. I'm not sure, Margaret, if you were, you might have been. Okay, so, but in any, in any event, it wasn't like, and that, and there was a lot of contention there, and, and the vote wasn't obvious. But sure, I mean, the way I looked at it then, and I would, and the way I would look at it now is, sure, you know, give us, let us know your thoughts. So, but, you know, we weren't beholden to anything that, that applicant put before us, nor would we now. But, but, but in something, you know, this, that complex or this complex, I think, you know, I think it was a reasonable way to go, and it just saved a lot of back and forth. And as a practical matter, I think, actually, I think, Paul, you were in on that decision way back when. We probably had two, if not three, meetings just hashing out the language. It was, it was, so, you know, I think it's, I'm just seeing upside. I'm not seeing any downside. We, we take a look at what the applicant's thinking. We accept or reject or do whatever we want.
To the chair, ahead of the next meeting, would it be helpful to have a list of draft conditions from me to the board? And you can all review that. I mean, that's essentially the meat of the decision document, right?
Yeah, because Jeff, I'm not trying to be difficult. I think it's easier than we're presenting it. I think if you've done all the things that we've asked you to do, and, and we're down to just the waivers and the access of the utilities, and I think that's about all we've got left. So I don't, I don't want to make a mountain out of a oil hill. I think we're ready to at least make a, at least give you the conditions.
And it's only been 23 years.
So I don't know if we need, we can ask you to help us, but I don't know if, if it's going to take that much.
Right. The only thing, obviously, the one condition that, that we would probably want to suggest to the board will be the one that relates to this sort of backup approach. And obviously, if you don't like it, you can reject it. But that part of it's a little tricky. And again, I don't even know what to propose there until we have further discussions with DPW, town manager, and maybe the selectman.
Well, something like that, in the past, what we've done is, is you can, we can say that that part of the plan, but that's, we would consider that major change. We would approve it subject to, if you're going to come sideways, you'd have to have another public hearing on that. It would be something like that. You'd have a public hearing just on the, the change, which would be the sewer change.
Yeah, the problem was that, so how would the financing and construction activities work? Let's say we get an approval of, let's say that we succeed in getting our approvals from the CONCOM, the ZBA, and the planning board by June. And let's say we get through MEPA by June, right? That's a long shot anyways. We still have to go through MEPA, if you weren't aware of that. That's going to take some time. But are we, if we don't know that we have utilities in Milford Street to connect to, and we don't have any assurance that we're going to get the approval we need to go cross-country route, no one's going to finance the construction of anything here. We're not going to be able to start any work out there. We're going to be just sitting on it until we, we know whether or not these maskwork grants come in for the town. We all want that to.
I can't, but, but I can't give you my vote until I hear from those people that you've been talking to. If TPW and the reviewing period, you know, says it's fine, go for it. I would, I would vote for it. So you haven't got that yet. So until, until you get that, how can I vote on it? I don't know enough.
I agree. So with that, and we're working on that part of it, yep.
So, so Jeff, what you're saying is you're expecting this board to, if we approve the project, we'd approve it with the Route 140 connection. But you're asking us to have an alternative that if certain things fall into place and the town officials that have, you know, have, have the most to say about the overland route, say that the overland route, while not preferable, is, you know, is, is an acceptable route, then your, your approval would automatically switch to, you know, or, you know, you would still have approval for that.
Yeah, exactly.
I think that's what you're saying. So, and, and again, I know, Tom, I, I know you're, you don't want the applicant to write the decision. But, you know, when we're in litigation, you know, oftentimes, you know, the judge is going to ask for the, 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 the two sides to kind of give proposed findings or proposed facts. And, you know, if your, if your side wins, you, you know, or you're hoping that your proposal's making into the decision. So I would, I would like to, it would help me to see in writing what the applicant is proposing on that one thing. Because the, you know, there's a lot of ifs in there. And, and, you know, I don't think any of us are comfortable saying, you know, if you do everything and the 140 doesn't work out, we're going to let you do the overland route until we're sure that the overland route works. And, and in my opinion, we'd want to make sure you did make a, you know, best efforts to get the Route 140 to work. So maybe it would help to see how you would craft that alternative and what conditions, you know, you think we would meet. Again, we wouldn't have to accept it, but it would be a good talking point to see what you had in writing.
And I, I would sort of add that I don't like the idea of just saying, we'll deal with the overland route when, when the time comes, if we have to. Because I don't want to get to a position where construction has started, and all of a sudden they come back to us and say, Route 140 fell through, you're going to have to approve this because we've already started construction. I think we need to know that there is a viable alternative route before we can approve it.
But we're not there yet.
We're not, oh, no, we're not there yet. But I think, Jeff, I have work to do to get us there.
So I've been, I've been overruled, Jeff. Looks like you're going to be helping us write the decision and the conditions.
It's a talking point. It's getting second simple. But I, I do...
I need your point that you need more information. That's what, I agree with that. And we need to get, we need to have further discussions. We need to get more information to DGT, and we need to have further discussions with them and DPW. And sort of how far do we need to, how much do we need to do now so that everyone is comfortable that that backup route is a viable alternative?
But I have, I have two other questions on the backup route. I know that the big hangup is public safety. Is, is the backup route going to require any, is it going to impact the community? And is it going to have any impact or just going to have to meet any conservation requirements?
Oh, yeah, it'll definitely be against the CONCOM.
And has it gone through CONCOM yet?
Yeah, no, because the notice of intent filing we have with the, have with the commission right now doesn't extend to the cross-country route. We haven't sort of, there are two stream crossings associated with that route. They were actually approved by DEP in a final order of conditions.
Because they lost the file.
Years ago.
Lost the file? Oh, sorry.
That all happened a long time ago, and we would have to file again with the CONCOM to get those approved. But the fact that we had them approved before gives us, us confidence that we could get their approval. Obviously, it would never get constructed unless we did secure those. But that risk is a little bit easier than the uncertainty of the planning board through a special permit granting, it's special permit granting authority, approving it or not approving it. That uncertainty is too great to just leave as an open issue. So that's the, that's the one we want to address as part of this process, which is why we authorized DGT to start working on its review of that alternative now.
But our uncertainty is pretty much based on what public safety says, correct?
Yeah, so that's going to be, any approval, you're subject to.
Yeah.
Subject to approval from, acceptance by the, all of those authorities.
Got it. And, and, and I would say CONCOM is a big player, not just public safety. Because when it was applied, when, when it was approved after the fact by DEP, after the, after the hearing, five, four, six years after the hearing when they found the rule.
Yeah.
Yeah. It was before we had a weather bylaw.
Oh.
Yeah, it was that long ago.
So, yeah, so there's, there's a lot of ifs in there. So, yeah, okay.
All right, so it looks to me like you're not that far away from the end. I would start comparing, what you, what you think...
The first end, the first end.
What you think the order of condition should be. Work with Mike on, on that. He'll get with us as to, and we'll, we'll compare them. But your, your main focus is going to be on the people that we rely on for the information, to make that call.
Yeah, I hear you. That makes sense. Okay, Sean, anything else? Cover the ceiling, I think we're good, right?
Do you want to continue this hearing till?
Yeah, we, I think we'd like to kick it out approximately, approximately a month, I'd say, not two weeks. So. Where are we at? April 10? So what, what are your meetings in May?
Second Tuesday in May is.
May 9.
I'll put you on for 7:15, May 9.
May 9, 7:15, that sounds good.
All right, thank you very much. Made some progress.
All right, thank you all.
Appreciate it.
Take care.
All right. Close, continue that public hearing and reopen the regularly scheduled meeting. And we get two zoning articles. So the first one, I do want to take, take.
Playing with Kirk, let's take a quick break, so if someone else is taking this. Bruce has been just opening it, so.
Okay, before we, before we open the zoning article submitted, is there anything else? Anybody that has anything that they'd like to talk about before we get into that? All right, and I am going to take these out of order. I'm going to take the zoning board of appeals, three to five members first, so that we can, I think there'll be more discussion on the second article. But I do want to take that, take that one first. And. Is that a, that's a public hearing. So we will have to suspend the regularly scheduled meeting and open a public hearing. And it's to see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Upton zoning bylaws, section 300-9.2. A, which establishes the zoning board of appeals from three to five members of the Board of Interstagger, that's two G's, the initial term of two new members to a one-year term and a two-year term. Is there anybody from the town or the ZBA that would like to talk about this? Do we have anybody on the line?
Bill Andrews is here.
All right, Bill, good, welcome.
We found out, much to our surprise, that if our decisions are not unanimous as a three-person board, we thought it was a majority rule. That's what I was taught when I joined many, many years ago. And it turns out, if we're only a three-person board, it must be a unanimous decision. And it's not always unanimous.
Does that go for the selectmen as well, Bill?
I don't know. The town manager was the one who made us aware of this.
All right, go ahead.
Anyways, so it was recommended to us that we expand to a five-member board, so it didn't have to be unanimous decision. And we had a quick discussion. Everyone on the board thought this was a good idea. So working with the town manager, we, and the planner, we, we, they came up with this idea of putting it before you, because you are the ones that actually have to bring it forth to the town meeting.
Tom, I, just to clarify, and, and Mike, correct me if I'm wrong. So unanimous, if it's a special permit, right? We're talking special permits here, not variances.
Yes, variances as well.
What's that?
Variances as well, special permits and variances.
Oh, really? Special variances, a supermajority?
Oh, but because it's a three-member board, it's, it's, it's not even majority. It's three members need to vote on it. So it's unanimous, it needs to be unanimous vote. There are, you're allowed to have a majority vote, two to three now with the recent legislative change for multifamily applications. So, you know, that changed that in 2020. So that's two to, two to one vote could pass a multifamily special permit. But for all other special permits per section nine of 40A, for a three-member board, it's three votes for special permits. It's also variances. It's also variances.
That's news to me. I thought variances was a simple majority.
This was quite shocking to the entire board.
Yeah, this, I mean, this arose out of a, a situation that involved a variance. So that's, that's why I'm certain of, of that. The only, the only thing I'm not certain of, and I didn't look up, is, is I think it's probably just two to, two majority vote to support building commissioner determination and appeals. But I'd have to verify that. But the, the biggest question and the, the reason for the ask is it's a unanimous vote for variances and special permits.
And, and if the board goes to five, would it be a supermajority for special permits and variances? Would you need four votes for both?
Yes.
Okay, and, and I, and I'm assuming that the ZBA bill, because the planning board was in this position way, way back, that if you are unable to have sufficient members, it's still, just because, you know, you, you need four votes. So for example, if you only had three members on the board and the other positions were unfulfilled, you'd be unable to have, you'd be unable to do anything. And I think there's this weird rule of necessity that comes into play and all sorts of weirdness. But, you know, that's, that's something else to, to think about, is that you, you would be, you would need, you would need four votes, even if, even if you only have three people on, on the board.
We're working to recruit people right now, so that once this is voted in, we will have people to join in. I know already that I've got one candidate who's willing to hop on board. And just basically looking for people that don't have an axe to grind and want to help, help out in the town. If you want to recommend candidates, we'd certainly love to have any recommendations. But we are actively recruiting, and I know I've already got one lined up.
Thank you. Anybody else, anything to?
Yeah, I'll just add that staff doesn't have a problem with the proposed change. Obviously, just making note of the, the membership issue, obviously. So if you're not able to get five members, then it'd be, you know, it doesn't, doesn't resolve itself. But other than that, it's no issue regarding increasing it to, to five members. The, I would, I would just ask that the board, if you were to make a favorable determination or a recommendation to town meeting on this, that you also just include, town council just made some edits to the proposed language that are not consequential, but, you know, good to have. I would just suggest that you make note of that, include that. That's, that's detailed in the staff review.
Actually, I have a question. How many open seats are there currently on town-appointed boards?
Oh, total? But on, on ZBA, Bill, the correct answer, I think it's two.
Because it's not just recruiting, it's sustaining. And, you know, I, I am very concerned about the ability to sustain full membership. But that's.
If I may speak, we already have an alternate, which gives us a fourth member. And we've, we've already been able to, I've got a fifth person lined up. We would start off right with five. Having the alternate makes it, we, we have one extra more than we need already at the three.
Are you, are you busy at all, Bill? Is, what's your, what's your workload?
Barely anything. All, primarily, our main job is in our apartments and sheds. That's probably 90% of our work. It's one meeting a month, and most, most nights we're out of there within, within half an hour. We do happen because of, we have a, a 40B before us. It's add the little bit. But it, it's a, it's the easiest board on, on town to be on, which is probably why I'm on it. And it's not political, which is one of the reasons I love it. So it's, it's a very easy board to do.
Appreciate that, Bill.
Like, like I said, my only cautionary note is, I mean, if you've got three, then you need all three. And then if, if you go to five, but you only have four, well, guess what? Now you, now you need all four. So you've, you know, you could be in a scenario where you actually make it more difficult. Not that it means anything to me or probably to anyone on this board. But, yeah, I mean, it's, you may have solved the problem today, but I would, I would concur with Kathy. This, if, if, if you go to a five-member board, then, then you're needing four votes, no matter how many people you got. Instead of three. So, so you're kind of raising the bar in that regard. I, I hear Gary's, and I, I hear the, the cautions, and, and I know that, you know, we do have, we're running a little shallow on the, on the talent pool. Most people, if they're on one board, they're on two or three. But this isn't irreversible. And I think if the ZBA wants to give this a try, if it doesn't work in a future town meeting, I don't think there's anything that stops us from going back to three. So I, I think I'd, I'd let them give it a try.
Is that a motion, Paul?
I move that we approve, that we, yeah, that we approve.
Well, actually, we'll have to, we gotta, we'll have to close the public hearing first.
All right, Margaret, Margaret made me do it, Tom.
Excuse me, this is Bill Taylor. I do have another question. I have, I have a question. This is Bill Taylor. And I'm just wondering if the, if you need to identify the number of alternates you can have.
In addition to the five members, Bill?
Yeah.
That was identified as two other, yeah, so it's like a total of a seven-member board, five full members plus two alternates.
That answers your question, Bill? Five members, two alternates?
Yep, that's what I, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, then I'm going to close the public hearing and reopen the regularly scheduled meeting. Paul, you had a, a motion?
I would move that we approve and report favorable action to the zoning bylaw change as amended by town council.
Second. We have a motion and a second and discussion on the motion. I say none. All those in favor of the motion approved to recommend approval of the zoning bylaw change of, or adding two members, signify by saying aye. Start with you, Paul.
Aye.
And then Gary?
Aye.
Yeah.
Aye.
And I will make that in hand.
Right.
All right, thank you very much, Bill. Bill? Okay, I'm going to suspend the regularly scheduled meeting and open a public hearing for a zoning article to see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Upton zoning bylaws, section 300.6.2, wireless data transfer facilities to adopt wireless telecommunications facility WTFs application requirements for completeness. All right, we had a citizen's petition on this, so Laura, you are on. Welcome. And why don't you, you cut the floor? Explain to us what we're, what we're doing here. We know, but we'll go ahead and throw it anyway.
Oh, Laura, you're muted.
You're on mute. You're on mute.
So, there you go. Hello, everybody. Laura Wodens Nelson Street. I hope you can hear me. Is that just about right?
Yes, please, Tom.
So in 1995, there was a lot of testing being done on wireless radiation. And they were working very hard on that. When it was time to create the Telecommunications Act, funding was cut for the research, and the research was never completed. So no real safety testing went behind the law that came out that we are still using today. Many years passed. What they did do was they did test a cell phone to the dummy head of a six-foot-two male. This is based on earlier military and industrial guidelines that they had used, and that's what they ended up using. And so because of this, it wasn't against the bodies, we use a telephone. So many people have felt that it wasn't very, it wasn't done well, and we're using guidelines that are, are not appropriate. So there's been no safety testing done. There was no NIPA testing done, no environmental testing done, no environmental impact studies done. And so we are using a law from 1996 that's 27 years old and never was backed up by what it was supposed to be backed up by in the first place. 2012, the Government Accounting Office asked the FCC to open a docket to take public comment. They received over the next six years, 11,000 pages of independent, peer-reviewed public science, published science, and also testimony showing harm. And that docket closed in 2018. Nothing was done with it. In 2019, the FCC was sued and lost the case, and they were asked to please update their standards, their radiation standards. And what they said in 2019 was, okay, we'll update our standards. We're going to take the 2, the 1997 standards, and we're going to bring those forward and use them again. So we're still using 1997 standards. In 2021, they were sued again and lost again. And this time, they were told that they needed to update their standards, and they need to consider things like why they didn't look at any of the testimony, why they didn't retain testing procedures that were appropriate, what were the impacts of radiation, RF radiation on children, the health implications on long-term exposure to RF radiation, the ubiquity of wireless devices and other technological developments, and the cumulative effect on us, and also the impacts of RF on the environment. And so where it stands now is the FCC lost that case. The DC Circuit Court required them to study the science and make update, and open another docket for 2019 to 2023 to really study the science and make standards that make sense and appropriate and take care of us. You know, the document that I received from our town plan or our Director of Land Use and Inspection Services talks a lot about zoning bylaws being there to promote the general welfare of the town and protect the health and safety of its inhabitants, and to use the most appropriate use of land through the town. We really want to preserve those kinds of things. And so there's a feeling among many people in town that if the FCC isn't willing to study the science that they've been mandated to do, they say they don't have the resources to do it, then maybe we need to take a little responsibility for ourselves, and we're asking for a pause on the rollout of new installations until we can look at the science ourselves and maybe create setbacks as so many towns across the country and the world have done. So that's really what we're asking for. I've sent you a lot of information by lawyers, because one of the concerns I knew that people on this board were feeling was that we could be sued if we didn't allow the telecom companies to give us what they're telling us they feel that we need. So I think there are ways that we can address it. You've received information about how exactly we can go about creating setbacks that are safe. And there are so many examples of where it's been done correctly and effectively. There are lots of court cases lately where planning boards and zoning boards and guidelines and bylaws haven't protected the citizens. And now there are huge problems, just like in Pittsfield. Right now, there's a case that's still very much open, and it looks like the citizens that have been harmed are probably going to win it. Verizon sort of asked for an extension, because when the Mass Board of Health came down and supported the local board of health that was supporting the citizens who have been harmed as documented by their doctors, it, it, they said, I think we need an extension. We need to go further into the future, and hopefully we'll be, they, maybe are thinking they would be able to come up with something that would support them. But we've been through this before. You know, fossil fuel companies told us the fossil fuels were safe, and cigarette companies told us that tobacco was safe. And now telecom companies are telling us without any safety testing at all that this is safe. And there's so much science, it's not even questioned anymore. And when this last court case went to the FCC, they entered all this testimony and all this science into the public record. And it's been accepted by the US Court of Appeals in the DC Circuit, and it's been ruled by them both that we're bound by it. So there's a lot on our side now that we didn't have before. So I'm hoping that you'll be able to find some comfort in that. I guess that's where I'll stop for now, and you might have some things you want to talk about. I know town council has some concerns and others as well. I guess it's, but we want to put it. and others as well. I guess it's, but we want to put it.
I'd like to open it up to any other, anybody that's on the line. We'll ask the planning first, and we'll ask the planning board for their opinions after everybody's spoken. So, did I see Steve lit up?
Hi, this is Steve Rockerton, the Chair of the Technology Committee. Technology Committee has discussed the issue of 5G for quite a while, and we are not health and safety experts. We deferred to the Board of Health to address whether, whether or not any of the health concerns that have been identified are legitimate or not. Strictly from a technology perspective, this is a, an opportunity for towns and cities to improve the infrastructure that they have in their towns, to provide faster, more, more comprehensive mobile cellphone service. It's not something that's going to go away. It's going to be here for, for the foreseeable future. And it may not even be likely that it ever comes to the Town of Upton because of the fact that the town is so spread out. 5G technology works best in areas where there's high density. In areas like Upton, the density just isn't sufficient to support the economic investment that would need to be made to make it viable. And for the same reason, this is the same reason why we can't, we can't attract companies to install fiber in Upton. It's just because of the economics. It's just not economically feasible to wire every house in town with fiber optic cable. So when you think about what we have now, we have in town, we have an infrastructure that was installed over 40 years ago, cable, the cable TV infrastructure. That's over 40 years old. It's coaxial cables strung on telephone poles and some places buried underground. Eventually, that infrastructure is no longer trying to be viable, and the only thing that can replace that infrastructure from a technological perspective is 5G. So the options that the Technology Committee sees are, going forward, is 5G is a viable technology. It may not be economically feasible for companies to invest in a small town like this, but it's the only option that could eventually replace the aging infrastructure that we currently have.
Thank you. I got a couple, a couple questions for you, Steve, if I may. No, I, my house, I have, I have Verizon cable right up to my house, like boxes Verizon on it. I have fiber optics right to my house. Many of the houses, I think all the houses on Mechanic Street and Fall Street, that section of town coming in from Grafton, all have fiber optics.
So there are, there are, there are a few sections in town, and maybe your street is one of them, that where Charter, who installed, not Charter, actually was Time Warner, who installed most of the cable infrastructure in town 40 years ago, where Charter negotiated a deal with another company like, who serves an abutting area to provide cable to that area because it was too far away from where Charter had cable infrastructure. The area around Peppercorn Hill is another area where.
So we have, so that's the thing, we have fiber optics in town.
So there are, like I said.
So we have fiber optics, small parts of town, right?
So we have fiber optics in very small areas of town, only by choice. It's not.
Why can't we start there? But why can't we turn that on? Why can't we start there?
Because who is going to do it?
Well.
Charter is not going to do it because it's too costly. So it, again, it comes down to economics.
These are Verizon's cables. Verizon put them in, there's the Verizon label on my wall. I mean, the Verizon truck put it in. What is, what is it that I'm missing about Verizon installing fiber optics in town?
Because all of, there are four companies in the state of Massachusetts that control all of the cable infrastructure. Verizon, RCN, Comcast, and Xfinity. They all control the whole territory of the state, and they've divided up the state into territories, and each company has their own territory and will not try to, to engage in activity in another company's territory. So.
Call them or not, they're not.
Upton, Upton is a charter territory, and it's up to Charter to decide if there's an area of town that's too remote.
It's not up to us, it's up to them to tell us they're the only ones? What are you saying? We have no options?
We have no option. And this is because of, this is because of the, the regulations that the state adopted 40 years ago when cable was brand new. So basically, the cable company has all of the power, towns have no power. In fact, our license with Charter expired over two years ago. So we technically do not have a valid license in place with Charter, and they continue to operate. And that's perfectly legal under the current regulation. So Charter decides what they are going to do. And, you know, like I said, running fiber optic cable is a very expensive proposition, and they're just not going to do that.
You just described industries or corporations that are hard, that are monopolies, that we can't deal with them. You want to bring in another one? You want to bring in 5G with the same kind of, we'll just, it doesn't matter what's wrong with it, we're still gonna stuff it down your throat? And I mean, let it gas, cars run better on let it gas, but we don't use it because it's a problem. But just because it's 5G is better, doesn't, or faster, doesn't mean it's gonna be better. It might be worse.
Here's the question. The question is, eventually, the, the physical cables that are running all over town are no lo, are not going to work any longer. And like I said, the, the, the economics of, of running physical cables from house to house in this day and age doesn't make sense anymore. And that's why the telecom companies have developed this 5G technology, because it doesn't require running cables from house to house. So it's an economic issue at the heart. It's not an issue that, as a town, we have any input on. We can't decide the economics for them. They are the ones that have to do that. All we can do is come up with, you know, zoning regulations that would be compatible with our town. That's all we can do.
I have a question. So in, there are towns in the state that owns their own utilities, right? Concord has its own electric utility. Are there any towns that have their phone cable utility?
Yeah, Shrewsbury is one. So Shrewsbury is an example. And so the way you would go about that is the town would have to buy the infrastructure from whoever the current owner is. So whether it's for electric, electricity, or, or cable, or whatever, the town would have to negotiate with the current owner to buy the infrastructure, the cables and all the equipment. And once the town did that, the town would be responsible for upgrading it and maintaining it. So a town like Upton certainly doesn't have the resources to even consider something like that.
Well, I, I still haven't got to answer that question. I've got three cables coming to my house. One's Charter, one's Power, and one says Verizon. Where does this cable go from? Where's it come from?
Well, I, I don't, I don't know the specifics of what's at your house. All I can tell you is that.
It wasn't, it didn't just start in the line. They didn't, they must, they must have come from Verizon, right? From, from somebody that sends out the signal and collects the money?
Well, so, so you could have Verizon wires at your house for a telephone. Who's your telephone provider? Who provides your telephone service?
My landline?
Yes.
I don't have one.
So, but it used to. There used to be a phone landline, you know, a copper landline to every single house.
Right.
And maybe that.
AT&amp;T, I don't know.
So, like I said, the only area that I know of where in Upton that has fiber is around Peppercorn Hill, because that, there's like five or six houses there, and they abut Milford. Milford is served by Verizon and provide, and Verizon in Milford opted to provide fiber optic service years ago. The selectmen have approached Verizon numerous times, asking them if they would be interested in extending fiber to Upton, and Verizon has said no many times. So it, it's just not an option that is, is even remotely possible for the town.
Even I'm sorry to hear, parts of the town.
I do have a question, Paul, Laurie. Seeing that board members are asking questions of the folks that are testifying, has, this whole thing seems based on health, you know, on, on, on health impacts that have been reported. Has the Board of Health weighed in on it?
I went to the Board of Health a couple of years ago, and we talked about it. There was no vote or anything taken. I recently called Diane down there and asked when the next Board of Health meeting would be, and they, I think their last one was February 27th, and they don't have anything on the docket. I think they said that they're gonna make a meeting when they have a reason to. So I said, well, I would love to come, but I don't know if they feel like they need more of a reason to create a meeting. But I very much like to go.
So, so basically, the planning board is being asked to determine that we're going to put a pause on granting permits because of impacts on health, but the town board that is charged with doing that has not determined that it is. And I do realize that, you know, in the information you've sent out, other towns, Pittsfield has, the Board of Health has weighed in there. But Pittsfield is Pittsfield and Upton is Upton, and Upton has not, the folks in Upton charged with public health have not determined that it is a hazard to public health, 5G.
We're not actually doing this based on health. We're actually doing it based on the law, and that the FCC was demanded to do something, and they haven't done it. That's really more what this is about. We are concerned that they're not doing what they've been told and protecting us. And understand, we understand that the FCC is not a health board. So we, we get that. But there have been opportunities for the EPA and the CDC and all, and FDA to be involved as well, and the FCC is not taking it. And so it just seemed that we would like to have an opportunity. You know, there, there are other things, too. Some of the things that are happening in some small, the problem with wireless technology is it's very, very poor, weak millimeter waves. And because they are so terrible, they have to have the stents infrastructure. Sometimes they can't go through leaves or snowflakes or fog even. And so they want to put it on a tower, on a pole, every hundred to 200 feet because they're terrible. So what they've done is they've taken a great connection, like a plain wire connection, which we already had, but which they no longer make money on because we have it already, and they're trying to sell us something that we don't need. There are towns in which they might only need three larger towers, but because the infrastructure company rents them to the telephone companies, and then they rent them to us, they're telling us we might need 120 in town.
So, I have a question about the substance of the bylaw. I mean, I, I think, you know, we're kind of going off on all kinds of tangents here. Substance of the bylaw is suggesting that when, if a 5G applicant, this is my understanding, and maybe I'm wrong, if 5G application comes into us, we would say it is incomplete because the FCC has yet to complete their work.
Right, and, right.
What, what will that do? Because as far, I mean, there's a shot clock. The application comes into us. If we say it's incomplete, and they say it's not incomplete, I think we would probably lose in court down the road. So it, it's really, to me, it's not clear that this approach is gonna accomplish anything. And that's why, that is my, you know, all of these other things we're talking about are completely tangential. This bylaw as it's written, I just don't know that it's gonna do anything. That is my concern.
So I, I, this is what I think. It is similar to one that's being done in Sheffield and Great Barrington, and they are supported by a nonprofit that has lawyers, and some of those lawyers were part of the, the forums that were sent out to you. So I think if you had an opportunity to, to listen to them at all, you'll know the way some of these courses have, courts have, cases have been handled. And the one that was in this document, towns have rights on small cell installations, talks about a place where, in New York, Flowers, Flower Hill, where 18 small cell antennas weren't allowed because they could not prove that, that what the telecom law requires is you have to be able to make a phone call in every place. And so they couldn't show that. Now, we may have places in town where we can't make a wireless phone call, and so because of that, we may, we would like to add waiver to, to this, a waiver opportunity.
Laurie, that, that doesn't really address my question. My question is, what happens when we say, we're, we're not, this isn't saying, okay, they're not providing service to every place in town. The, the change that's being proposed says, the, the planning board will say the proposal is incomplete because the FCC has, I don't know how that is going to, how, how, what's gonna happen when we do that? Like, we don't just get to say, oh, we're just gonna keep this hearing open forever because we think your, your proposal is incomplete. At some point, the shot clock runs out, and, so what are we, what are we supposed to do then? Like, I don't, I don't think this is going to be an effective mechanism, is my problem. It's not, I disagree with you, I'm not saying that at all. I'm just saying, the proposal, as I see it, is not gonna be effective. And I think that, is that the example that you just?
Yeah, that was, Laurie, I just passed Mark. This was, she's highlighting basically what town council expressed that I shared with you. And I just highlighted this, her paragraph that town council talks about shot clocks and all that. So that's exactly what, what Margaret's commenting on. And I'm just mentioning that just to say that town council agrees with that skepticism.
And, and I guess the question is, will the AG's office, when they see this, agree with that skep, I mean, this, I could imagine the AG's office looking at this and saying, what does it mean to say this file is incomplete, and how long can you say it for?
Yeah, it's a good question. I mean, AG's office might, they might, maybe they'll pass it because it doesn't necessarily conflict with any state constitution.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? But, but obviously, then there's a higher, you know, federal government being.
And I'm also looking at the bylaws here, you know, about what are we doing here? And again, I, you and I have talked about it, and I, I, I do share, you know, some of where you're coming from. But, you know, part of the bylaws are consistency with federal law. These regulations are intended to be consistent with the Telecommunications Act of 1996. And then there's a whole section that, that extends from that. And these, you know, this proposed bylaw change is conflicted with that part of our bylaw. And that doesn't, it isn't addressed here. It's not the one you're targeting here. It's not the section that you're, you're talking about. You're asking for us to put, and says specifically, FCC of 1996. So, you know, this is talking about, you know, putting a pause on, you know, the, the granting of permits for however long it takes a federal agency to act on something, if ever. I just, I just don't see what we're doing here.
Through the chair, I think more folks that wanted to speak, I saw a handover or two. Do you want to hear more from them?
Uh, yeah.
You can step your hand up. I saw Marcella, you had a hands up. Did you have something to share, to add?
Yeah, I, I'm just wondering why, why there's resistance to having a pause. We're not saying telecom companies go away. It's just asking them to do what they are legally required to do. It's just asking them to do what they are legally required to do. How is that, how would we lose in court if that is the case?
Because, because the law, because the law, the FCC says there's shot clocks, you must make decisions within this amount of time. And so the FCC, for an application for a new tower must be acted upon within 150 days, while an application to co-locate small cell facilities must be acted on within 60 days. The FCC also regulates the program for determining if an application is incomplete. So I guess my, my concern isn't, I'm not disagreeing with the big picture. My concern is that the way the bylaw is written might just not work, might not do anything, might just be rejected by the AG.
But procedurally, listen, we could, we could as a board approve the submission subject to FCC, whatever. The problem is we could subject it to that, it's still an approval within the time limit. It's just subject to an additional step. So I.
But the step is, I mean, again, this is where you just get into what, I mean, it gets far afield, but I've been involved with federal decision that have gone on for 30 or 40 years. There is no time requirement by which even if courts tell them to, and so a pause is, in my mind, you know, could be a fancy way of saying, you know, a ban, a temporary ban. So I understand if you're talking about a pause being six months, but I was just, you know, weighing in on a federal ruling that had been around since 1992 and the EPA had not acted on it yet. You know, so it's not like, you know, you know, in the state legislature, it's seen as a way to stop things from happening and say, wait until EPA, and I know EPA is different from FCC, you know, issue federal standings on it, standards on it. Is that reasonable? Sure, it's never going to happen? No.
And the subject to it doesn't help that. Often if you put it subject to, if it never happens and it's never resulted, you still did the same thing. You still didn't solve anything.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I just, you know, like I said, I'm not disagreeing with you here. I'm just saying, I don't know that this mechanism is effective and I, and I don't know what mechanism would be effective. So I don't really, I don't, and you know, we can, we can go forward and see what happens. Maybe the AG will understand that.
I, I want to give Marcella a chance to finish, but just that one quick thing. I guess it's my hope that the shot clock does, I think the shot clock begins when the application is accepted. And if the application isn't, isn't accepted, I don't know that the shot clock begins. I don't know the answer to that, but that is my hope. But Marcella, you had your hands still up, so I know there's more you wanted to say.
Well, rather than have that the telecom companies, you know, put a pause on what, wouldn't this make a statement to the telecom companies that this is something that is important to the public and that they better get on it and get this stuff researched and get the, it's, I, I don't understand why that, why the telecom companies are being regarded as this, you know, be all, end all, encompassing power when the possibility that this could be very damaging to our health. All we want to know is whether or not it is and the research, you know, they need to do the research and they haven't done it. Why not? Because there might, maybe there is something that they will find that will stop this technology from moving forward. You know, cigarette companies, you know, are a case in point. I, for years and years and years, they kept telling us it was safe and they were making tons of profit on it. And turns out it's not. If they had released, they knew, they also knew that it was not. And if they had released the research that they themselves had done to find that cigarettes were not good, you know, were not healthy, they.
Just in a minute, is a bylaw change the way to go to achieve a public health end? And if we're trying to make a statement, if we're doing, is a bylaw change, should it be used for, as a symbolic gesture? Or as a, or should, you know, the proponents of this proposal look at other avenues, like to have the town Board of Health issue a statement, to have the Board of, you know, it just seems.
Have any other towns taken the approach that you are proposing here? Has this gotten through a G review anywhere with declare the, declare the application incomplete?
So right now Sheffield and Great Barrington are doing the same thing and they've sent it to them and they say, we don't do it ahead of time. We can't tell you ahead of time. But the lawyers that have been dealing with litigation all over the country are being quite successful. And you, I think you know about the New Hampshire report, which has come out and they've put a hold on all of this because they've got these 15 recommendations that are everything from serious setbacks to, oh, they, they're every aspect of it. They want, they want to know what it is for children and pregnant women, they're all those kinds of things.
I understand that, I understand that. I just wanted to know whether this approach had been reviewed by the AG yet. And so it has not.
It has not. No, and it would be great if, if we could get to the point that it could because as Mr. Antonella said, it's not in violation of any state thing. It would be interesting to see. I don't know if this has been done in other states. I do know that I, I sent you 10 pages of cities and towns and countries where bans or restrictions are in place. So it's more and more.
I absolutely understand that. I was just asking about this approach.
Mechanism, I understand.
The one that, this is the approach that we're going to ask town meeting to vote on?
With any objection.
And so I wanted to know whether anyone else had been successful because I just, I am not convinced that this can actually work, to be perfectly fair.
And you know, one thing, what Mr. Rakitin said that gave me a little bit of comfort is he feels like we have time, that they're not going to be coming soon, which is a good thing. So if we ask for a little bit of time, we can come back in six months a year and do something different, but maybe this gives us a time to really work on those setbacks that I think we wanted to work on a little bit, but we didn't really have the time to do it.
Yeah, but you're not asking, but you're not asking for a specific amount of time. This, this doesn't sunset, right? This is, so you're calling it a pause. For me, it's a pause forever unless we do something.
Well, we can come back at next town meeting and.
It, it might've been a little bit more persuasive if it was a six month pause or, or if it was going to be.
It's not, it's not really a pause that they're asking. It's asking to change the language such that it says we would declare.
Incomplete.
These incomplete. So it's not a pause, Gary.
No, but, but in terms of, I mean, this bylaw, if it, if it makes it onto the books, would be on the books forever. It's not like the, for example, the marijuana moratorium, which was going to sunset after, you know, six months or whatever, nine months or whatever it was. So with the, I know this board, myself and others, we had two primary concerns at least. One was that it ran afoul of the Telecom Act of 1996, I believe. And the other was that it didn't apply to facilities and rights of ways. And so those, we've, we haven't really talked about the latter, but in the, in the material we received, it seems like our previous concerns were, were validated by Town Council and the Town Planner. So, you know, with all respect to the citizen's petition, petitioner, you know, I, I haven't been persuaded personally.
Paul, you want to weigh in?
Yeah, oh, hang on for one sec. Can you hear me?
Yep.
All right. I, I mean, I'm, I'm going to be right where Gary is. I mean, you're talking about the FCC hasn't done its job, but Congress has passed a law that says that, you know, state and local government can't regulate the placement, construction or modification of personal wireless service facilities on the basis of the environmental effects of radio frequency emissions, to the extent that such facilities comply with the Commissioner's regulations concerning such emissions. So the commission, it's, it's, you know, it is still the law. The, nobody's challenged or successfully challenged that aspect of, of the federal statute. It's not just a FCC issue, it's a congressional issue. So I don't think that we can, even if we believe there's a health issue, I don't believe you can ban something if a statute says you can't ban it. And I think that that's what this is doing. So I, I don't, I don't see it as the, the right thing to do, you know, for the town because I think it gets us into litigation. You know, you talk about all, all these other towns that are challenging it and fighting the good fight. I mean, Pittsfield, Pittsfield issued a cease and desist order on a cell tower. It got sued. It withdrew the cease and desist order because it didn't want to continue to get sued.
But now the suit is back. The suit is back.
That's, it's a different suit. So citizens have filed an action saying the town shouldn't have withdrawn its cease and desist. So now you get citizens suing the town, saying that the town needs to order a cell tower down. I don't think that's going to survive. I'm not sure if it did. There was a motion to dismiss filed.
And it didn't get dismissed. That was earlier this week. It did not get dismissed. It's going forward.
So, but again, so I, I, I don't, I don't see it. I also, you know, it, the, the Town Council has pointed out that if you were going to try and regulate it, it's more, probably more effective to do it as a, a bylaw that affects pole placement, things in the right of way. Cause that's where you're going to have these, you know, what, what I understand to be the 5G network would be something that essentially runs along 140 and not, you know, through the, through the forest. So, or through people's backyards. So I, I'm, I was skeptical to start. I'm, I'm still skeptical.
I'd like to address that because the Telecom Act 47 USC 332C 7A says this, preservation of local zoning authority. General authority, except as provided in this paragraph, nothing in this chapter shall limit or affect the authority of a state or local government or instrumentality thereof over decisions regarding the placement, construction and modification of personal wireless service facilities. There are several places where it says very clearly, this is up to the local zoning authority. It can't be about environment, but they didn't even do their own EPA review. So they made a law that isn't even based on environmental studies. There's so many things wrong with this, it's hard to even know where to start, you know? But that's what they're telling us. This is their law. They are telling us they have reserved the local zoning authority so we can work on the bylaw and we can make it safe, just like they're doing, they did in Concord and Bedford and Lexington and Chilburn Falls and all over the place, they're doing that. We just kind of had run out of time. So I feel like I'd love to let it go forward and I'd love to have your support in letting it go forward, just to let the people decide. I know we need two thirds vote. It's a heavy lift. We're probably unlikely to get it, but if people would like us to take a little bit of time to look at this more, maybe make a committee that can look at setbacks like you did, Paul, when you were doing it the first time. There's so much more science now about the impact on children. They're saying now that in the last 10 years, the amount of radiation in the air is one and 18 zeros more than it was 10 years ago. There's been no studying. It's unbelievable. So it may be hard, it may be that the FCC got a law passed without any of the things that they should have done. And just like cigarettes and just like fossil fuels, we're being harmed by it in so many ways. So I.
So Lori, let me ask you this. We heard from Steve that he doesn't think they're going to be coming to Upton soon. Is it better to go forward with a law that has the potential to be rejected by the AG as soon as we pass it? Or to take the time and come back with something better next year that we think will be able to, that we think will be able to be effective and will be able to stand up to, to the AG's review? I mean, I, I just feel like rushing something in that seems kind of questionable, that I'm, I'm having a hard time understanding how it will work. Makes me a little, it makes me a little concerned and I don't want to go to town meeting and have something pass town meeting, have the AG shoot it down and then come back with something better next year and have people at town meeting say, well, we passed something last year and the AG said no, so no. You know, I, I, there's that, there's that risk.
If you support it, we're able to come back with something another time if, if we decide that that is as, as a community is what we want to do or working with your board. I do still think the idea of working with the Board of Selectment on pole regulations is a good idea and that would give us time to do that as well.
But yeah, one thing, Lori, if the planning board, if you do not get a vote to prove or recommend approval, I think you've got a two-year wait before you can re, resubmit it.
The same thing.
The same thing. So you would have to, you couldn't submit the same thing next year if we, the planning board voted to not, not recommend approval.
We would not submit the same thing again. We really did this because we couldn't, didn't have time to do the setback thing. And we just wanted to educate people and get the word out about the harms of it.
You have definitely increased the awareness of, of the subject. I thank you for that.
Well, thank you also.
Any other, any other comments?
I guess, I guess I would, I would suggest withdrawing this just, just because you want to protect the ability to do it really well and not, you know how town meeting is. You don't want to go in, get something passed, have it get shot down by the AG and then have people mad and be like, no, we're not doing this. Whereas if you come back with a, a good setbacks law next year.
Two thirds is a tie.
Mark, I, I think getting shot down by the AG would be, you know, the best thing that could happen to this thing. But you know, I'm more concerned that the AG lets it fly and then we're in court and we're spending our, then we got Town Council at their bill outright defending the town. And, and as Paul pointed out in Pittsfield, it looks like they got a twofer going on. You know, that's the last thing this town needs.
Yeah, that, that motion to dismiss was argued on Thursday, just on Thursday. So there's, there's no decision on it yet.
Right, but the judge, yeah, but they, they thought the motion dismissed was going to happen that day. And that's not what happened. They're opening it back up.
Yeah, meanwhile, meanwhile, the meter's running.
I don't think there's going to be a problem because the Mass Board of Health have supported the local Board of Health and the governor was, found to have been coercing.
That is sort of tangential. There, there is no decision in Pittsfield. There has not been, the motion to dismiss has not been thrown out. So, you know, and I don't think that matters anyway. I think it is, is do you, the question is, do you want to withdraw it without, I don't know what the terminology is about, or do you want the board to vote on it?
Well, I'm not going to.
I'm not sure.
I'm not going to, I'm not going to call for a vote on this until next meeting. I'm not going to call for a vote on this tonight. I want everybody to think about this and give us two weeks and then we can call for a vote next meeting or you can withdraw, you have two weeks to think about it.
Well, and, and also you can pass over it at town meetings. That's, if that's what you decide. Cause it's probably already on the warrant then. Yeah, so it would have to be a pass over at town meeting.
Yeah, Tom, and you know, I, I don't think that we, we even really can ask the, the petitioner to withdraw. I mean, that's something that gets, that would have to be done at town meeting. As a practical, as a practical matter, if we don't, if we don't make a recommendation one way or the other, then the town meeting can't even vote on it. So, so I guess we, we, we've got that card, if you will, but. And the other thing too, just as a procedural matter, it's, it's a little different than the CPA CPC, you know, just so the petitioner knows, we can vote unfavorable action. That doesn't, you can still take it to the floor. We just have to give a recommendation in order for you to be able to take it to town meeting floor. But I, I really think it's not our place just to ask the petitioner to withdraw. That's, we.
I guess, Gary, I didn't mean to ask to withdraw. I was just maybe recommending, rethinking the best strategy to get a good bylaw through.
But we've got to, I mean, we've got a, we've got a job to do, which is to recommend either favorable action or unfavorable action. That's, I think those are our two choices.
And while, actually we have in the past, record. Well, actually, we have in the past recommended, we have given no recommendation on a couple articles. We had no recommendation. But that was a planning board vote to take no action, to take no recommendation. Doesn't happen often. Any other, I I do want to close this public hearing. If if there's nothing else new we can add, if there's any final thoughts, Marcela?
Yeah, should this be withdrawn and we feel like it needs more work? Could we get a commitment from this board to help us develop or something that would fly?
You got it.
I'm sure it can be withdrawn now.
But it's the other.
Have to be a passover at town meeting.
The other question I would have is if we were going to do it, where it would go? And also, we talked about adding a waiver for parts of town with little and no cell service work can be documented by drive tests and drop calls and that sort of thing, because we know there are parts of town that do need installations. And the other thing is there is fiber also all gone up North Avenue now. So I have a feeling it's a lot more places than they know or that we know. But there's a lot of fiber in this town because it's at all the public buildings as well. So they're possibly closer to it, and AT&amp;T is gone, going fiber now. So it's starting.
We hold off on discussing this level of detail about where fiber is because I don't think it's tangential to this motion. You know, that's.
It's so easy because we have electricity, and it goes the way electricity goes. So it's not that hard to do. And it's easy to update, and it's better, and it would just be great if we could figure out a way to work together and get it.
All right, well, I I believe, well, I will help you, and there's others I know that will help. We had, like I said, 20 people together to do the initial cell tower. Paul can testify to that. So the more the merrier for that. Get some experts, get the town involved, get the Technology Committee on board. I, I'm surprised that the Technology Committee isn't more involved in in this. So that would be a target of mine, to get them more, more on board.
I just.
They didn't even know that, that it seems like the town didn't even know that we are wired somewhat with fiber optics already. And that cable has to go someplace, turn it on, send me the bill.
And I just.
I do want to move on. All right, so I'm going to close the public hearing and reopen our regularly scheduled meeting. And, uh, you got any comments before we move on about last subject? All right, I am going to call for a vote on this in two weeks, on the 25th. So you have until then. To get us any information that you have pertinent. And thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you very much, all of you.
Business to begin.
Hey, keep that, take a pause. The else, Bill, anything?
Uh, now, the, 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 what do you call it, statements? We've signed it for that, you know? You know, anything with? That's for the next month.
Yeah, Paul wants the town. The information that we sent out, yeah, that's, yeah.
Yeah, Paul wants the, because he gets the big picture this year, so.
The last time we spent it, the signs, whole thing, right? And you spent your whole years thing on.
On the land.
Yeah.
Well, if there's any, I, no.
I own it.
What was sent out, if there's any paperwork, I mean, I can make sure that we have copies of paperwork at the, the next meeting, if you're going to be here. I think all that, I think the issue is that it needs to, needs to be submitted so that you're on automatic.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, well, I think that's it. There's nothing else. Meeting adjourned at 9:14. Thank you very much.